Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, January 24, 2023. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, February 7, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
And Commissioners, we're going to need to do a voice vote today. Issue with one of the voting cards. So Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Morning.
Morning.
Alan Seibert, 5537 North 140th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68164. This is a single-family residence in the Standing Bear Point subdivision, where my wife and I lived for 22 years. I will be talking about some of what I've learned in my efforts to appeal our property valuations over the last couple of years. We've had our house appraised a few times. The first time was when we bought the house. The other times were when we refinanced our loan. For our 2021 valuation, I created a spreadsheet similar to those previous appraisals using comparable sales from the D.C. Assessor's website. Excuse me. Like those previous appraisals, my spreadsheet calculated an adjusted sale price based on values of the differences in amenities. I submitted that spreadsheet to the BOE, asking that our 2021 value be lowered to the adjusted sale price on my spreadsheet. The BOE lowered our value, but not as we expected. There was no explanation of how the BOE's value was calculated. I filed an appeal of our 2021 valuation to Turk in August 2021. The filing fee was 50 bucks. Last November 2022, I received a letter from Turk telling me the hearing would be mid-January 2023, a year and five months after I filed the appeal. The letter listed two other people that would attend, and I had to provide them copies of everything I would use as my evidence in the hearing. The letter suggested I bring an additional copy in case someone else attended. The letter also said I must use property profile reports, not property records. Property records are printed from the D.C. Assessor's website. Property profile reports must be purchased from the D.C. Assessor's office at a cost of 50 cents per page. Those copies cost me $24.50. I wanted to give those in attendance a chance to review my evidence before the hearing, so I sent copies by registered mail. Those mailing costs were $44. At the end of the hearing, I was told it would be a few more months before a decision's made. For our 2022 valuation appeal, we decided to use a professional appraiser. The appraiser we used has several years of experience and has experience with valuation appeals. We submitted that appraisal to the BOE, and the BOE accepted that appraised value. The appraisal cost $700. During the last couple of years, I almost used a ream of printer paper and more than $50 of ink. It has me wondering if you think property owners have a reasonable, affordable, or fair chance of appealing their taxes. I'd like to be able to comment more about my efforts, what I've learned, and what changes I think can be easily made to change the property valuation process, but I've only got five minutes. I think most of my changes would be easy. Some would be quick. They would reduce tax protests. They would comply with state regulations. And total countywide tax revenue would not be significantly reduced. Earlier this month, I saw our 2023 valuation is 15% higher than 2022 and 64% higher than 2020. I started reviewing the properties in our neighborhood, looking for comparable sales to use for this year's appeal. Our property is an irregular-shaped lot, which makes it one of the largest lots at 19,868 square feet. I started looking at the other irregular lots and noticed something I thought was peculiar. There were two larger lots, both a little over 20,000 square feet, and both are currently valued at $40,000, while our lot has been valued at $63,700 for the last six years. When I looked closer at those other two lots, I saw one has been valued, one has been valued at $40,000 for the last six years, while ours was at 63,700. And during that time, that belonged to, and that lot belonged to and still belongs to the BOE's residential appraisal coordinator. It looks to me like that property has been undervalued by more than $20,000 for six years. I wouldn't call that uniform and appropriate and proportionate or fair and equitable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. Resolutions D, E, and F, there is no need for executive session, so the motion can... Oh, hang on. Can I first get a... Which are you going to talk about?
D.
D?
Yeah, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. I would not be up here, except I think there are some representatives from Judah Kingdom Center here today. Yes? Is that you folks? Are you from Judah Kingdom Center? Yeah, come on down. By way of backstory, this is a church. They went quite a number of years without filing exemption applications. They finally filed applications for previous years dating back to 2020. It's been that long. And so because they're out of time, we recommended denial. But I saw them, they had come to our office to work on the forms, even though they're out of time. And I saw them sitting in the back row, and I know that your practice has always been with these kinds of things, to give the organizations an opportunity to speak.
Yes, thank you.
So, yeah, there's basically applications here from '20 and '21 for a couple of different parcels that are filed well out of time.
Thank you.
'22 as well, I guess.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am the pastor of the Judah Kingdom Center. The church has been in the city for...
Could you state your name, though, please?
Oh, Pastor Alvin Mitchell.
Thank you.
And the church has been in the city already for about, like, 44 years. And my wife always handled all of this business here. Well, I lost my wife about two years ago. And she was the only one that handled this. And I was never involved in it, so I didn't know all that was happening and all. And when I realized, I don't know whether we got a letter, and that's why we're here, and all, because, like I said, the church has been in the city for, like, 44 years. And I've been the pastor. And I was thinking, I said, "Well, we can't lose the church. We paid it off. We got, like, anywhere between 50 to 100 members if everyone comes," and all. And I just wanted to come and see what can be done. Can we have our tax exemption?
Thank you. I do have a question for Mr. Goodwilly, if I may. The 2021...
And '22.
And '22, are all of them past the date of...
Yes, yes, they are. The structure for applying for exemptions in Nebraska is this. You're timely if you file on or before December 31 of the year prior to the year for which you want the exemption. So if you wanted a '23 exemption, for example, timely filed is December 31 of '22. There is also a six-month grace period that closes on June 30 of that year. For each year you're late, there's a monetary penalty. But we send a couple of reminders, you know, every spring, even after the December 31 due date, to say, "Hey, guys, you're late. There'll be a penalty, but it's still preferable, you know, to losing out on the exemption." So in this scenario, I think the last year they actually filed might have been '18 or '19. So then the following year, we would have sent all the reminders. Once they got out of the system, you know, then that kind of stops, you know, drops the curtain on sending any future reminders. So the key year here might have been '19 or '20, whenever the last year was that they filed. Then the following year, we would have sent the typical reminders. One in November, one in December, one in March, and one in end of May, 1st or June. And when we got no response, got no applications, that's when value would go onto the property, and it would just stay there until we got anything otherwise. So this dates back a while.
Can I say something, please?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Tricia Lawson. I've been a member of the church almost 40 years. And our co-pastor, which is the pastor wife, became ill in 2020. And she passed away May 16 of '21. And at this point, the pastor, she handled all of that, as the pastor said. So we wasn't aware of it. When she died, we came in the altar to try to start getting things together, and we noticed mail that was coming from. What I did, I ended up having surgery. Then we end up in COVID. And what I was doing, I was calling down, and I spoke with the lady. And I asked her, you know, "We have all this. What do I need to do to try to get it straightened out?" And I began to tell her, well, what she informed me was, we had three properties, which we wasn't aware of. I was told that there is no church that sits on 3036 Bedford Avenue. And I said, "Ma'am, I don't think that's true. We purchased a church in 2000." And I said, "The address on there says 3036 Bedford Avenue." And I said, "And the mailman brings it here also." She said, "I don't care what the mailman brings. I'm telling you, there's not a church on 3036 Bedford Avenue." And at this point, she gave me a number, told me I need to file. At this point, I didn't know I was filing on the piece of land we have on the corner of 30th and Bedford. There's a piece of land there, and then there's also a parking lot, and then there's an upper parking lot that the church sits on. Well, when she gave me that number, that's the number I've been filing under. And for all those years, I was filing under the piece of property on the end of 30th and Bedford. Had no clue. And then she told me, I was getting stuff for... We had changed the church name from Love Deliverance to Judah Kingdom Center. So I'm trying to get everything straightened out with her, and then she's telling me, "Well, ma'am, you have two churches." I said, "No, we don't have, we don't own two churches. We changed the church name. So it's no longer Love Deliverance, it's Judah Kingdom Center." So I've been trying to prove that we don't have two churches. I've been coming down here. So this year, I told the pastor, "We need to get up, and we need to go down here and see what's going on." You know, we had to shut the doors because of COVID in the process of dealing with the First Lady that passed and trying to figure out all of this. But the more that I was calling, it was just getting confusing and confusing. I was told that we had three separate lands. I told we had an address at 3008 Bedford. I was told we had one at 3024 Bedford. And I was told that 3036 didn't exist. And when I came down, we came down to get, try to get things done before the end of the year, before the 31st. Then I was told that we only had to deal with these two pieces of land. So, you know, it just gets confusing and confusing and confusing. We moved up there in 2000. People put up their homes. We sacrificed, we gave. Out of our pocket, we was able to purchase our building, and we paid for it. It wasn't that we didn't care about the tax exempt, or we was overlooking it. Once the First Lady passed, we just didn't know. As soon as I found out, and I tried to do what was told me to do, I put the numbers in there, and I faxed it right away. And that's what I had been doing every year, faxing that same number, not aware that it wasn't on one land, but it's just three pieces of property as they look at it down here, which I had no clue about. And the more that I talked, it was just becoming more confusing. So the pastor and I got, we came down here in December. And the gentleman helped us out. And he read the papers for it. I filled them out because I didn't know we had. It was considered as three separate properties. And to this day, I'm still told there's not a church that sits on 3036 Bedford Avenue. And when I walk in there every Sunday during the weekday, I look, and the address says 3036 Bedford Avenue. So I'm confused too. And I'm hoping that we don't lose the church. We worked so hard, and we sacrificed finances that we didn't have, but we gave because we wanted to own our own church.
I understand. Commissioner Rogers?
Mike. So what's the look-back option in years? What's the, like, the statute of limitations in years?
Well, you know, once you, you know, once you're out of, once you're out of the filing window, you really are at least statutorily done. What I will say is that, for example, in another context, there's a refund statute that has a three-year window. If you're filing personal property returns and you need to amend them, there's a three-year window. So if you take things from some other contexts, it looks like what the legislature has done over the years is put kind of a three-year flag on some things. So, you know, technically, there really isn't a look back in the statutes that deal with exemptions. But if you were going to analogize to something else, three years seems to be the magic number.
Okay, so help me, you could... What does that do, though, property-wise? I guess you could, you could find a path, but technically, they would still have to pay a late fee.
Yeah. Statutorily, you max out at six months. Or at least, that's how it talks about the penalties, because the cutoff is June 30, six months into the year.
So you would pay one...
So there'd be, it's like, it's like either 10% of the total tax is due if the house were on the tax, or the property were on the tax rules, or 100 bucks a month, whichever is less.
Okay.
So I don't know what the window is, but, yeah, let's say hypothetically, it'd be 600 bucks a year for each parcel, for each tax year. So there'd be a little bit of bite, but certainly not the same as, you know, delinquent and, you know, perhaps having to redeem the property if someone bought the tax sales certificate or any of that. I'm not sure how far down the track the treasurer is with this.
Okay, so let me, then let's talk about the... There's, there's, what's the statute? Who... Now, I know that area. I know there's a church there.
Sure.
I walk by it every day.
This may be a function of the address conventions the city has. Sometimes parcels can have an address that people use, but it's not sort of the official address we have on the parcel number, if that makes any sense to you.
Yeah, so from our, I know there's some statute somewhere where if there's an era or something...
Clerical era?
Yeah.
Sure.
This is kind of clerical. Because there's no definition of clerical era, so...
Yeah, they're actually, they're actually...
Don't answer me. Don't answer me. There's no definition of clerical era. So, okay, so let me, just in this atmosphere. You don't know me, but I know you through your son. I just want that to be known. There's no connection, but I just feel like I need to disclose that. So my motion is, then, that we would approve the exemption with the church having to pay the reasonable amount of late fees by law. And, yeah, that's my motion, to approve the exemption for the years, and the church would pay the fees by law.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yep, so I just want to make sure that everyone understands we have a certain amount of statutory, or there's, the Nebraska state law says we are not allowed to adjust certain things in this. I think you're, you speak your case well, and it makes a lot of sense. So I'm with Commissioner Rogers on that, too. If we're, if we have the authority to grant the exemption, I would second that motion.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I just have one, a quick one, in terms of... So say, because I think it should pass, does the state, then, could they intervene and say, "Wait a minute, timeout"?
There's, there's two, there's two paths to this. One is, the assessor's office has the ability to appeal decisions of the county board. Candidly, I don't, I don't know that we would necessarily do that in this case. We'd have to think about it. That's our duty, to think about it. But whether we do or not, yes, the state does have the ability to periodically, if they wish, contest a county board, appeal a county board decision granting an exemption to the Tax Equalization Review Commission. It doesn't happen very often, so I don't think the odds are real high, but there certainly is a potential for that to happen. Sure.
And they have had, and we ask this all the time, and you stated, as long as you've been in this community, but as long as they've been in this community, and the church itself has had that tax exemption that you know of, right?
I think, I think the first year they stopped filing might have been '19 or '20.
Right.
I think they actually have filed for '23.
I was just going to ask that.
So they can get back, so they can get back on track.
Okay. But it's been exempt for all those previous...
For a long time. The thing I think may be tripping up, and it trips up some small organizations that maybe don't have a full-time administrative presence, is state law requires an application each year for each parcel of real property that the organizations own. And so I can see where you can sometimes have what seems like a circular conversation about what you own and what you need to file on, what you filed on in the past and what you need to do in the future. Because there are some organizations that have, especially in the eastern parts of Douglas County, that the parcels are kind of crazy quilt, right? And their parking lot might be two small parcels instead of one large parcel. And you have to kind of be paying attention to whether you get all that stuff in for each parcel. That's kind of why we take such care, to send all the reminders that we do, because it's easy for that stuff to get lost in the wash. So, yeah, they've, they've been filing, they had been filing up until '18 or '19, whenever the last year they stopped with.
And I would just state, because with the confusion, I can completely understand why you're confused and what you've been given and told. I would ask, Mike, that we still work on that a little bit, so everybody's on the same page as to what is what...
Sure.
...with their properties. So that's taken care of going forward, if we could?
Madam Chair, if I may, a question from Mr. Goodwilly. If this gets approved, the address on the form they submitted is 3036, but to me, it looks like it's probably 3024 Bedford. I mean, do we need to make the change to the correct address on the forms?
Let me, let me get back to the office. We'll, we'll make whatever change we need to get the right addresses on this.
Okay, all right.
I'm, given the conversation you've already had, it's not clear in my head, at least, if it's 3024 or 3036. Let me get that squared with the records, and we'll...
All right.
Right.
Thanks.
We'll get that fixed.
All right, there is a motion and a second. Any further comments? Please, roll call.
Okay, and this is to approve the exemption for the 2020 through 2022, and it'll leave any penalties or fees that they would need to pay. Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, so thank you so much for being down here. And Mr. Goodwilly will work with you in the office to get all of that straightened out from here forward.
Thank you all for your time. God bless you.
Thank you.
So with that, we need EF, and no executive session is needed. Adjourn. There was a motion by Commissioner Rogers and seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
With that, we will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Present. And before we begin, I just want to take a moment. You know, we've, again, encountered quite a bit of tragedy, not only across the country, but right here in Douglas County, Omaha, with the stabbing that took place at a school yesterday, as well as the two officers late last night getting shot. And so if we could just take a moment and, again, give our thoughts to those all involved, to this community, and put out a plea that we need change, and we all need to make that change together. So I would ask for just a moment. Thank you. With that, we'll move to Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, January 24, 2023. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, January 31, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is our consent agenda, items D through H. Please note that Item B has been stricken from the agenda. And Item D, there's just one revision for the resolution, and that's adding that the DCMA Director is hereby authorized and directed to execute such agreement on behalf of Douglas County. And other than that, I see no other changes. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I have a question on Item G. And I think Director Myers was here earlier. I saw him. This is an amendment to the agreement between Douglas County and Well Path for the provision of mental, medical, and mental health services. Morning. You reached out to us before the meeting to kind of give us some background on this. It's a $1,045,266 budget request to fund an increase in the existing contract between Douglas County and Well Path for these services at the Douglas County Correction Center. Is that right?
That's, that's correct, Commissioner.
And this is somewhere between a... And this is somewhere between a seven and eight million dollar contract that provides essentially medical staffing to the Douglas County Corrections Census Population.
Medical and mental health staffing.
So the $1 million plus increase requested in item G is for what?
This adjusts the wages that they're paying to...
I'm sorry, I have a little difficulty...
This adjusts the wages that Well Path is paying to their nurses, certified medical assistants, licensed mental health practitioners, and their mid-level providers. Basically, they have forty-seven employees, full-time employees, at Corrections, and this amendment adjusts their wages to a market rate that they've been paying in neighboring jurisdictions.
Specifically Sarpy County?
Sarpy and Lancaster County.
And we negotiated this latest contract with them when?
In 2019.
And was there an addendum to that since 2019?
We entered into a, we are in the first of a possible, first of two possible two-year extensions. We are one year into that first extension.
So that extension of the contract was entered into last year?
Yes.
In that contract, we agreed to a set series of payments for these services, did we not?
We did.
Okay. And I think that you stated to me anyhow yesterday that because of the cost of particularly nursing services in the metropolitan area going up, that in order to stay competitive, they have requested this million dollar plus increase to their contract to try to meet some of the same nursing salaries that are being offered in, for instance, Sarpy County.
That's correct.
Thank you. You know, I have never supported the Well Path contract in the first place. I think seven or eight million dollars should buy us a lot of healthcare in our corrections thing, and we certainly could probably do it ourselves for that amount. That said, Mike, I did ask you to compare their requested compensation for, I think it's registered nurses primarily, is it not?
Yes, I looked up like the three most, they have the most, the registered nurses, licensed practical nurses, and certified medical assistants are the most numerous positions.
And I asked you to compare that to what we already pay. We have significant number of individuals in these categories at Douglas County Health Center on Forty-second Street. And I think that you got back to me with some numbers that showed the request for compensation included in this, and the compensation that we already offer our nurses working for Douglas County is roughly the same.
It is similar, and we've probably come out ahead because we're not paying the benefits costs to Well Path staff.
So, you know, in light of that, I guess I would say this is probably somewhat necessary in order to continue to provide, you know, basic medical services at the Douglas County Correction Center because of the nursing shortage that we are experiencing here and really everywhere. To have competitive wages is essential to securing those positions. Is that your opinion?
It is my opinion, Commissioner.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
So, Mike, you're supportive of this, and, you know, I don't know, with what Commissioner Kavanaugh said, you know, if we should be having more discussions, this is a one-year contract, and if we should have more discussion of it, I'm open to always looking at options, really. And your input is most important. And I know you and I talked about this, because if it's a serious matter in the health area, then you and MC or one of the other facilities is then used, if I'm correct.
That is correct.
That was when we met and talked about this. But I think right now, this is the right alternative for us to be approving today and move ahead with it.
I agree, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda items?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I would just say...
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Okay, go ahead.
I share Commissioner Morgan's concerns about this and would like to revisit that, you know, when the contract comes up, I think in a year's time. I think that's probably a good idea.
Commissioner Morgan?
The only thing I'd say is we ought to be doing something much ahead of it, because this is a, you know, little bit complicated matter in today's world, especially with the hiring and staffing and all that, and then get input from somebody that's more of a professional rather than myself, and make sure we look at all options. And I think that we have a commissioner, we have a lot of commissioners that are more qualified. And secondly, I would say, Commissioner Boyle, I throw it to you because of your medical background in the future when we do have that discussion. I appreciate that. And also our chairperson, who has a real passion for trying to always do the right thing in the health area with us. So that's what we should do, and of course, Mike, yourself and your people.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I kind of stayed quiet on it because I do think this is a conversation for down the road. To provide these services to a prison system is much different than providing it to the average patient who comes into a regular doctor's office. And so it's a very specialized service, and so you really have to think of all the things that those folks are doing when they choose to work for a company that provides this service. I mean, there's more hazard involved. It's a, sometimes they're very tough positions to fill, so I have a lot of respect for folks who choose to do prison medicine. So bottom line is, it's always a good idea to take a look at things like contracts down the road. At the same time, it's not going to be something we can just like bid out to local hospital systems. It's so specialized and there's such, you have to be careful with things ranging from the special needs of folks in the correction system to the liability of it, too, and personal safety. So I think that when it comes down in the next year or so, when the contract comes up, it's certainly something to be set out, sent out for bid, but it would be to other organizations that do provide specialized care to correction systems. So, but thank you.
Alright, thank you. No other further comments or discussion? There was a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle? Yes. Commissioner Kavanaugh? Yes. Commissioner Friend?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia? Yes. Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we will go to recognition and proclamations. The first three are recognizing some employees that are leaving our employment. There's Thomas Belton, who's worked for the Douglas County Department of Corrections for twenty-six years, and I don't think Tom is here. Recognition of the following employee retired, Evelyn Brown, who worked for the youth center for thirteen years. And recognition of the following employee retirement of Thomas Sullivan, who's worked for the Department of Corrections for sixteen years. On behalf of the board, I would like to, one, thank those employees for their service to Douglas County, their dedication and hard work for many, many years of service, and ask that we have a motion to approve those three retirements.
Most approved.
Second. Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle? Yes. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Friend?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia? Yes. Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is a resolution declaring February as Black African American History Month, commemorating the tremendous contributions of African Americans to the American history. And this is brought to us by Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to, before I start reading, I want to thank Marco San Martin and Leader Baez for their help on fine tuning this. It reads, "Whereas in 1776, people envisioned the United States as a new nation dedicated to the proposition stated in the Declaration of Independence that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas Africans suffered enslavement, were first brought involuntarily to the shores of the United States as early as the seventeenth century, and whose ancestors subsequently faced the injustices of lynch mobs, segregation, and denial of the basic and fundamental rights of citizenship. And whereas in the face of injustices, people of goodwill of all races in the United States have distinguished themselves with a commitment to the noble ideas on which the country was founded and fought courageously for the rights and freedoms of African Americans and others. And whereas many African Americans lived, toiled, and died in obscurity, never achieving the recognition that these individuals deserve, yet paved the way for future generations to succeed. And whereas African Americans such as Maya Angelou, James Baldwin, Clara Brown, Ralph Bunch, Shirley Chisholm, Frederick Douglass, Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, Jackie Robinson, Sojourner Truth, Harriet Tubman, the Greensboro, North Carolina Ford, the Tuskegee Airmen, Muhammad Ali, Ella Fitzgerald, Edith Savage Jennings, along with many others who worked against racism to achieve success and to make significant contributions to the economic, educational, political, artistic, athletic, literary, scientific, and technological advancement of the United States. And whereas the February birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass inspired the creation of Negro History Week through the efforts of author Dr. Carter G. Woodson, considered to be the father of black history, eventually to become Black History Month, a month specifically set aside to recognize the heritage and achievements of black people in the United States. And whereas the Black History Month of 2023's theme is black resistance and recognition that African Americans have resisted historical and ongoing oppression in all forms, and that these efforts are to advocate for a dignified, self-determined life and a just democratic society in the United States and beyond. Now therefore be resolved by this Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County that this board does hereby proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month, and encourages every resident to recognize the importance of February and an opportunity to reflect on our complex history while remaining hopeful and confident about the path ahead and commemorating the tremendous contributions of African Americans to our American history. And I would move approve."
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Larry?
Larry Stor, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I don't disagree with the body of the proclamation, but I'd like to point out, there isn't a copy for people to read, and maybe they can hear you plainly on the YouTube or the Cox Cable thing, but sometimes not there either. But some of the wording, I think you maybe ought to revise. When you get down towards the end there, it begins to sound like you're pitting us against each other again, with words such as historic and ongoing oppression in all forms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The implications of those words is it still continues today, but you don't tell us who is doing that. The implication is that it's probably white privilege. So we'd like to see you moderate your words so that we're not pitting each other against each other for somebody's political purposes. The proclamation is fine, but there are other races besides the black race. I myself am basically English in name, but I might have a little bit of colored blood, I might have a little bit of Indian blood. I can't prove that, but it kind of looks that way. So I wonder how many races there are, if we're going to have a proclamation every month for every different race. If not, then maybe we should drop it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I want to thank Commissioner Rogers for bringing this proclamation forward, and for those on social media, you know, sometimes social media is a bad thing, but I can tell you, it's very good at looking at some historical people and issues and events that I never learned about growing up. And so, again, during this month, you'll start seeing those pop up quite often, and to me, they're very interesting, and again, educational, because we should never give up our ability to learn or our want and desire to continue to learn. So thank you for bringing this forward. With that, please vote.
Commissioner Boyle? Yes. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Friend?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments? Anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Larry Stor, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. This is the time of year when we start changing some of the rules and updating them. I remember back in 2020, it was quite a year, particularly in the summer months, but there was a lot of discussion at this body. We even had commissioners leave their chairs and come to the podium to speak of citizens. It's quite contentious because we had, somebody was giving us the ideas that we ought to eliminate citizens' comments. But the Constitution says you really don't have that power. They're even trying to do this in Bellevue at one time, recently in Fremont, and our elected people just don't get it. Citizens want to, and they have a right to address, petition their government. You do not have the right to say no to that. So that gets into the point of the wording of the rules, such as in the citizen's comments area that, oh, I might have to go to my own rep and argue this out and get permission to things instead of addressing this body as a whole. The problem with that is, it's seven of you against me. So that doesn't give a citizen a fair chance, does it? Family Fathers intend for us to be able to talk to all of you at one time, and the open meetings that implies each and every item. But you guys like to make your own little rule to maybe limit how much time a citizen gets in these meetings. Some of the bodies say we're going to have all citizens' comments at the front part of the meeting, so they don't know what we're going to be talking about, and they can't talk about what we do say. Your own words here say, oh, well, we will not respond back and forth unless we want to. You can if you want to. But that leaves me sitting back there waiting and hoping that maybe you'll want to call me up to the stand and ask me to rephrase my words, or correct my words, or apologize for my words. But seldom does anybody want to hear me again, but they do hear other people. That means you treat some people different than others. It's not only this board, but in the city council, which I might add, they are a lot worse on this than you are. You're a lot more pleasant. Speaking of pleasantry, was down to state house last week for a hearing. My golly, they do not have a sheriff's deputy sort of physical presence, threatening presence in a way. They have men in red coats, and those men in red coats are very pleasant. They even converse with you. They don't physically handle you. If a citizen like me is out of control with possible gray area of criminality and a crime, they call the highway patrol. And that's fine. Call the sheriff's deputy. But he shouldn't have to remove a citizen if you're whim because you disagree with what I say. Even some of our commissioners in 2020 was trying to point that out. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to public hearing. We have a public hearing brought to us by our county engineer. our county engineer requesting open the public hearing on Tuesday, January 31st, 2023, for the vacation of 47th Street, south of Manchester Drive, within Yorkshire Hills Edition, to public comments and action to be taken Tuesday, February 7th, 2023. Hi.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Dan Kudlec, Douglas County Engineering Manager. And with me today is one of the adjoining property owners, Richard Hensel, who may want to say some words also. What I'd like to start off with is a little exhibit to show you exactly what we're talking about in regard to this public hearing for vacating 47th Street. Let's see if I... Hope these turn out so we can see them. There we go. All right. This is a kind of a overview of the location. 47th Street is a dark line circled. It is about one mile north of Highway I-680 and the interchange of US 75. It's, it's sandwiched in between Calhoun Road and Highway 75. It's a neighborhood that was platted in 1961 called Yorkshire Hills Edition. And as part of that plat, 47th Street was dedicated as a public street within the plat. It's never been used, it's never been opened for that matter. That is just a zoomed in picture. That kind of shows how the houses fit on either side of it. The three property owners surrounding that property signed the petition to request the vacation. There's three property owners, one on each side of the 47th Street and one at the south end of it. This is showing you the road itself. It's highlighted in red. It's a unimproved part of actually both lots that are adjacent to it. As you might know, that this area is located within the three-mile limit of the city of Omaha. So one of the first steps that we always take is to contact the city. By law, we're required to, to get their opinion as to whether or not this vacation can go forward. They did review it, Public Works Planning, Planning Board, and passed a resolution in October authorizing us to go forward. They had no objections. We also, as part of the report, had a fee appraiser appraisal value of the property. It was valued at $13,300 based on independent appraisal. Let's see. I guess as good as we can get. This is a view from the public street looking south between the two homes. You can see that it is a tree grassed area. Looks like side yards, basically, of the homes. County engineer has no objections to vacating this road. We have never taken care of it as far as maintenance wise. We've been asked to on occasion do some work in there. We might have helped them out on trees in the past, I'm told, but basically we have not done anything on this platted street. So another reason why we have no objections to vacating it. With that, I guess the only other unique item on this vacation request is one of the property owners on the west side of the road has indicated they have no interest, if it is vacated, obtaining half of the road. And they signed a notarized document stating that, that they have no interest in it and would recommend that we vacate the entire roadway to the one neighbor, Richard here. So you're aware of that. So if this goes forward, we'd ask that you vote on it on February 7th. It's required by law.
Okay.
And with that, if you have no objections, we'll have our neighbor, Richard, tell you his side of the story.
Sir, good morning.
Thank you for considering this matter. Name is Richard Hensel. I reside at 4629 Manchester. Have basically taken care of the vacated area, storm damage, lawn service, whatnot. You know, it's in between both residences. And it's, there's really nothing more than that. We, we take care of it. And I want to do some further improvement going into the, to the south a little bit, which is going to involve removing some metal debris, garbage, car bodies, stuff like that. I have the trans permission there, the property owner, to the south, you know, and if with your approval, then I'll go ahead and proceed with that. And I'll keep it nice and, nice and clean for you.
All right.
That's it.
Well, thank you. With that, there are a couple of comments. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Richard, thanks for the information. Dan, I had a quick question. So it's a hypothetical, but what happens if, first of all, Richard, the, the property taxes are going to change. I don't know how significantly, but that'll, that'll end up occurring. The, the question I had is if, if, if it, what happens, does anything happen to the zoning, Dan? So, so I mean, what if Richard wanted to build a, again, it's a hypothetical, what if he wanted to build something right in there? He can, there are, there are zoning restrictions, and it's the largest plot of land now in that whole neighborhood. So what are the unexpected things that Richard, you know, can almost bank on when he has that much more land?
Well, we did estimate what his taxes would be after this would be turned over to him. I can't remember the exact number, but he's aware that there will be some ramifications in that regard, tax-wise. As far as building it, it is, will be his property. We do require that any existing utilities be protected on, on an easement if need be. And if there has to be relocation of utilities to build a house or whatever, that would be up to Richard to make that fair with the utility company. If there's any in there, I don't even know for sure. But also, there's a little bit of drainage that goes through there under Manchester Drive, a little culvert. And so he'll have to be aware of that and deal with that if need be, if he put a structure somewhere. But those are all doable. So to answer your question, I assume he could build on there if he wanted to, but that's, you know, that'd be up to the, you know, the permitting to the city, since this is in the three-mile limit.
Final question, Dan. So could, could Richards, this is just for my adification too. Could Richard sell that particular plot without selling the property the owns now and have, and, and the new buyer actually build a house in there? Is it, is there enough space?
I don't think it would fit within the setbacks. You know, there's so many setback feet, that type of thing. I doubt it. But I don't know. I, I wouldn't know for sure, but it'd be
Okay.
pretty unusual.
I was just curious. Thanks, Dan.
Yep.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Dan, I just have a couple, a couple of questions. So Mr. Hensel is the only neighbor who wants to acquire this property. Would pay Douglas County the $13,300 market value?
That's your decision. It's a condition. The law allows for that. Now, this is not a county road. In my mind, it's a, just a platted on paper, public road within this subdivision. It wasn't meant to be a, you know, a county road like any of the many county roads we have in this area. Calhoun Road, for example, is a county road. So we have a vested interest in the county roads over time, you know, with maintenance and paving and drainage and you name it. So there's some value we'd like to sometimes get back. In this case, I was looking at our records. I'm not aware of any time where we've actually charged the value of the property within a platted, unincorporated subdivision like this. The most obvious example would be King Lake. We've vacated numerous roads in King Lake over the years, and we've never charged to recoup any of that money. So I don't know if that answered your question, Commissioner.
Well, yeah, kind of. I, you know, I guess I'm wondering, who's the owner of record of this property now?
It's Douglas County.
Okay. So Mr. Hensel would pay Douglas County the $13,300 for acquisition of the property?
Yes.
Good. And you showed the, the map of the neighborhood earlier. Is this just a one-block-long section of this thing, or?
Yeah, it's, it's a long block. It's Manchester Drive, goes from what, 53rd Street to Calhoun Road. You know, it's, I don't know how many homes are in this neighborhood, but there's, there's a number of them. It's a nice, nice neighborhood, but just one road runs through it.
And I think if I read the map right, this is on the south side of that Manchester road.
Yes.
Okay. Does it extend onto the north side?
No.
So it's just this one block, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Couple hundred feet long, 50 feet wide.
Okay, great. Well, good luck, sir. Thanks.
All right. No other questions or comments from Commissioners? And so we leave this public hearing open, correct, until action? Or do we close it? Nope, we can close it then, right? Can we close the public hearing now?
I think you can, if you wish.
And, but then we're not going to
No act-
-take action until the 7th?
Correct.
Okay. So we don't need to keep it open until then?
You don't have to, but you could if you wanted.
I don't see anybody here nor on Zoom that wanted to speak, so.
Oh.
Go ahead and come back to the microphone?
In regards to the, the purchasing of the property, like I said, I appreciate your consideration. But do take in account the fact that we have maintained that property without any county assistance of storm damage, maintenance of the property, cleanup, mowing, since we have been property owners at 4629 Manchester.
Thank you. That's a good point. Commissioner-
Thank you very much.
Morgan?
Pertaining to this matter, I just wanted to get permission from the chairperson before Dan leaves to ask him a question on another quick question, if I might.
I don't believe that we can, but because we're in this public hearing.
After the public hearing, I meant.
I don't know if we can because it's not on the agenda, so he, you wouldn't be able to do a back and forth. But afterwards, you could without being on the mic?
Okay. Very good. I might try to do that, Dan.
But speaking to-
I respect that.
But speaking to your point, when we do these, there's some negotiations that can go on with, even though that's the appraised value, we can negotiate the price. And he brings up a good point that we've done nothing over the years, and he's done it all. So I would say that there probably needs to be some conversation about that. Right?
Yes, we can have a discussion with him, but I agree with everything you just said.
Okay, great. Commissioner Rogers?
I guess I'm just dangerous enough that I heard this in a class, but after a certain amount of years of taking care of it, can he claim ownership?
Maybe. There's, there's a list of factors there. And we can talk about that after if you'd like. But I think we have a path forward in order to transfer the ownership.
Okay, all right.
And I would be fine with just transferring it, to be honest with you. So, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And sir, did you have a question on this or comment?
Alan Seibert, 5537 North 140th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68164. I do have, it's my understanding that when there's two adjacent property owners and one property owner has been maintaining a strip of the other property owners for several years, and the actual owner has not filed a, I don't remember the exact word, filed a complaint or told them to stop, or told them that they own the ground after so many years, that the ownership of that property ends up being ceded to the person, the other, whoever it is that's been maintaining that property over the years. So I think in this case, it's a technicality that, and I agree with what Commissioner Rogers has been saying.
Thank you. All right. So we will close the public hearing, and we will take action on February 7th. And then discussions about the transfer will take place between the engineer and resident. All right. With that, we'll move on to committees. The first is our budget committee, the budget report as presented, and then monthly fee report from the county clerk as presented. Child and youth, there is just one announcement. A couple, a few weeks ago, when we were talking about our youth and the gun violence and the uptick in it, I made the comment that we should have some kind of community summit regarding youth and gun violence. The Empowerment Network then took that and were holding some issues themselves, or some summits themselves, meetings themselves. So I stepped back and had some conversation with Commissioner Rogers and Chief Deputy Kim Havacotti about doing a resource fair. I put one of these on every year for our aging, our older Americans and caregivers out at the Office on Aging. And I had been attending a couple of meetings that a provider in the community, Reconnect Inc., Ms. Levon Stennis, was putting on with families. And the theme from the families was, we, we don't know what the resources are that's out there for us, nor do we know how to access them. So I thought, well, this would be maybe a good thing to try, is to have a youth and families resource fair, where we could present those, have the providers there with their information, talk to the parents, and then the parents would know what they are and know how to access them. So Commissioner Rogers and Kim liked that idea, so they worked with staff and came up with a date of Saturday, February 4th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Center Mall. This will have the resources, providers in the community that are directly funded by Douglas County. Kim has put together a pamphlet that will be ready then to be handed out to the families that lists the resources, as well as kind of a little description of what that resource is and contact information. So if you could kind of get the word out to folks that if they are troubled by not knowing how to get, or know what resources are out there for them, or how to access them, that we're having this community resource fair for them. So to please stop by from 10:00 to 2:00. There will be some refreshments, lots of conversation. And again, most important, the providers and the services available to our families. So with that was the only announcement, unless you wanted to add anything. Where'd Kim go? Did you want to add anything? All right. Okay. With that, we'll move on to- With that, we'll move on to community services. There's one item, a reallocation of the 2022-23 Visitor Improvement Fund grant award for Partners for Livable Omaha. And Commissioner Boyle, did you want to say anything?
So, these folks are the people who have the Omaha Mobile stage and they want to reallocate some of their funding to reinforce the stage. So, it's really to buy equipment to make sure that it's a safety issue more than anything. So, I present a motion then to approve that.
And I just want to make a statement to explain my no vote in that as I'm just keeping with my no vote for the allocations of this fund this year. So, with that, any other questions or comments? Please, roll call.
Motion by Boyle, second by Commissioner Rogers.
Boyle, sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay, I was just making sure. Okay, Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
No.
Motion passes six to one.
With that, we have the human resources. It's a weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. And then, we do have our legislative report and it's in your packet. But I think it's, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things that, starting this week, starts, the first day, yesterday was two weeks of day-long hearings, so there'll be no floor debate. And then, we did hear last week from Governor, his state, of the state address. He introduced his biennial budget. Many of the, or the themes included lowering income tax, eliminating the community college property tax levy, require, and requiring the state pay for community colleges, accelerate the elimination of the social security income tax, continue funding the Perkins Canal Project at $1 billion Education Future Fund with an additional of $250 million each year and a 1.3% state budget growth and a 2% growth for the University of Nebraska. There was not any conversation or increases given to healthcare provider rates in the recommended budget. But then, we do have these two bills that we're going to take a position on. One has a hearing date set for February 7th. One does not have a hearing date yet. And then, on February 3rd, please note that Health and Human Services will hold a hearing on LB 337, which Senator Rippey is carrying for us, and that's the changing, the provision relating to disclosure of patient information under the Mental Health Practice Act. There's been many in this community that have worked on that, so that hearing will be on February 3rd at 9:30 a.m. So, with that, we do have two legislative bills that we are asking support for. And that is, you heard last week, Mike Reed, our Noxious Weed Director, and he asked that we support LB 218, which continues the funding for Noxious Weed. And then, LB 276, which is Adopt the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Act. Hearing to be determined. And again, we just had an update on that at our Board of Trustees meeting from Sherri Driver, that we are watching very closely and would be definitely a positive to Douglas County if this moved forward. So, with that, I would ask for your support on LB 218 and LB 276. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Larry?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette, 68132. I want to thank you for mentioning a few things that are not listed. I guess that means that I can bring up a couple that are not listed, and that would be the various election bills that they've introduced down in Lincoln. And I think because they did, that implies that there is concern even amongst legislators about the security of the last election. Otherwise, why would they want to change the existing election laws? So, let's open it up for debate in this body and at the city council, so citizens can give their input without going down to Lincoln. But if there is no evidence and no chance of fraud, then please ask them to not waste our resources talking about it down there if they're not going to do anything about it. Okay? Thank you. That's what's nice about this board compared to the city council. If it's not specifically listed on that paper, don't even try. Thank you.
With that, no other legislation. We do have need for an executive session for litigation.
Madam Chair, we never voted on the?
Oh, sorry. Could we vote on the supporting LB 218 and 276?
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Now, can I get a motion to go into executive session for litigation? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please, roll call.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Motion passes seven to zero. We're adjourned at 10:27 a.m.